I want to resume our puppeteering, uh, ordinance 29-24.
Ordinance 29-24, an ordinance of the city of Muncie, Indiana, annexing certain territory to the city of Muncie, Indiana, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof, and making the same a part of the city of Muncie, Indiana, annexation area number one, portions of Farmington neighborhood.
Is anybody here to speak on that tonight?
Mr. President and members, my name is John Fallon. I live at 3905 West Heath Drive in Muncie 47304, and I'm here this evening representing the Farmington Neighborhood Association through its ad hoc committee on annexation. I'm joined here this evening by other members of the committee, some of whom you know, Robert Donati, David Hinkle, Kirsten Smith, and I hope he gets a chance to be here, Ronald Collins, who's a longstanding board member of the Farmington Neighborhood Association Board. Also with us this evening is Gary Wangler, who is the president of the Farmington Neighborhood Association. The purpose of my remarks this evening is twofold. First, to register an objection to the proposed annexation of the portion of Farmington subdivision, your ordinance 29-34, and secondly, to request a retraction or defeat of that ordinance proposition as it affects the Farmington subdivision. There's some background to this that you're likely familiar with. Subsequent to the city deciding to annex these properties, the, uh, there were certified mail notifications of the annexation proposition sent to most of the residents, affected property owners in Farmington, not all, and I'll, I'll speak to that in just a few minutes. After that, there were informational meetings, very good informational meetings that went into the details of the annexation and how it affected our neighborhood. And then there was a general membership meeting of the Farmington Neighborhood Association, and at that meeting, it was recommended that the Neighborhood Association establish a committee to conduct a poll of those affected property owners, um, subject to the, uh, the annexation. And that's when the Ad Hoc Committee on Annexation was established, and we proceeded to conduct that poll with the, with the following pretty simple methodology. First, we, um, we sent two informational letters to all 59 affected property owners, and subsequent to that, we followed up with one informational email based upon some of the questions that arose from those two letters that we sent. Beyond that, there were many conversations among neighbors wondering about various aspects of this, and the committee itself received a lot of questions. And then we conducted some home visits, simply trying to meet with people to find out what they felt about the annexation. And the results of, of that poll were crystal clear. The majority of the affected property owners in the Farmington subdivision are against the annexation. Uh, the count to date is 40 affected property owners out of 59 against the annexation. And as we understand it, this meets the 65% threshold to void the annexation proposition per section 11.1 of the Indiana Code 36-4-3. There's a number of reasons for my neighbors feeling the way they do about this, and I'd like to share a few of those right now. Uh, first, our neighborhood enjoys a very good relationship with the county of Delaware. Uh, last year, uh, there were several different paving projects that were completed in our neighborhood, and as we understand it, there are a couple other paving projects scheduled for, uh, 2025. Those facts prompted a few questions. One of those is this, what is the city's plan for paving our streets, uh, in the future? Uh, secondly, our fear is that our streets will begin to look like some of the other major streets in our city. We're not certain that the city has the resources to care for the streets in our neighborhood. Uh, secondly, there are concerns voiced by my neighbors about police and fire response time without the engagement of additional personnel. What's the city's plan to cover considerably more properties without additional personnel? A third, there were concerns about tax increases, and we wonder if anyone has looked into the impact annexation would have on assessed value in our neighborhood. Uh, next, several affected property owners, at least four, perhaps more, were never notified about the annexation proposition. So we would ask, what steps has the city taken to ensure that all affected property owners are aware of the annexation proposition and its details? Uh, next, property owner, uh, property owners in, in my neighborhood see no benefit to the annexation and some likely liabilities. What benefit does the annexation portend for the Farmington Neighborhood Association? We've seen no plan proposed for what the city will do with the additional revenue from the annexation. Affected property owners in Farmington already pay for and enjoy an array of city services, and we ask what will change? What's the plan? Neither the Farmington Neighborhood Association nor any group of affected property owners requested annexation. What's the rationale? What's the real rationale for the annexation and what's the plan? It's difficult to believe that given the annexation of the other two proper, two areas, uh, that response times for the emergency services we presently pay for will not increase. And finally, there was no formal or official communication about annexation between the city of Muncie and the Farmington Neighborhood Association, the official, um, homeowners association in the, in, in our neighborhood. And of course, while not required, formal communication with our neighborhood association would have been very helpful and very much appreciated. So the next steps for us now are to certify the affected property owners' positions as the basis for rendering the annexation effort null and void. And so I conclude this evening with a very respectful request, and that is this, that you would see fit to retract in light of these comments, see fit to retract or defeat ordinance number 29-24 in the true spirit of neighborliness, in the true spirit of sensitivity to the wishes and interest and concerns of local residents, and in the true spirit of respect for the participatory nature of local government operations. Thank you so much for the opportunity to share.
Anyone else from the audience? Moving on to ordinance 30-24.
Ordinance 30-24, an ordinance of the city of Muncie, Indiana, annexing certain territory to the city of Muncie, Indiana, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof, and making the same a part of the city of Muncie, Indiana, annexation area number two, portions of Heron Point neighborhood.
Is there anyone here to talk about this from the audience? Anybody from Heron Point neighborhood? We'll move on to the next one. Ordinance 31-24.
Ordinance 31-24, an ordinance of the city of Muncie, Indiana, annexing certain territory to the city of Muncie, Indiana, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof, and making the same a part of the city of Muncie, Indiana, annexation area number three, city-owned parcel near Farmington neighborhood.
Is there anyone wishing to talk on this tonight from, on, for ordinance 31-24? Okay, we'll move on to the next one. Ordinance 32-24.
Ordinance 32-24, an ordinance of the city of Muncie, Indiana, annexing certain territory to the city of Muncie, Indiana, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof, and making the same a part of the city of Muncie, Indiana, annexation area number four, Westminster Village.
Is there anybody here from Westminster Village? Anyone wanting to talk on this ordinance? Give us a couple of minutes and we'll revine for our city council meeting tonight. Just need a couple of minutes. Waiting on Brandon.
Brandon just.
Waiting on Brandon. Me, everybody. I want to thank everybody for coming out to our January 6 city council meeting. Can we all stand as a pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, our invocation is going to be done by Jeff.
Bow our heads for worship. Our precious heavenly Father, we are so thankful to be able to come together as a community. Lord, as we're standing before thee tonight in the, in lieu of all the things that need to be done for the city, we ask, Lord, that you would guide us and direct us as we step into a new year. Lord, we ask that we would come together to do that which is pleasing in your sight and beneficial to all the people of the citizens of the city of Muncie. We ask, Lord, you would guide our thoughts, help us, your heavenly Father, to make those decisions that are right, where we ask it all in the Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Tonight's citizen recognition is by Nora Powell.
I need to put my eyes on. This thing's getting old. Okay. Anyone on Facebook is most likely familiar with Moth Danner's work. Moth is a Muncie native. Her family has been in Muncie for nine generations. She grew up spending time in her mother's bookstore, Danner's Books, being influenced by the likes of Shakespeare and other amazing authors. Like me, Moth moved away from Muncie in her twenties. She attended school and later lived in New York, but she returned to Muncie about 15 years ago, buying her home and planting roots of her own. Moth and her mother Susan, also known as the Pie Lady, started baking together shortly after Moth's grandmother died, and nine years ago, they ventured over to Hartford City to sell their baked goods at the Growers and Makers Market. And this is when Moth asked herself, why doesn't Muncie have something like this? And so later that year, with the help of her mother, she founded and opened the Muncie Makers Market with two goals in mind, to provide an outlet for local artists and bakers, but also to increase access to local goods. Moth sees the Makers Market and the other organizations and events that she's involved in as business incubators, creating opportunities for small business owners. Moth is the director of Muncie's Yart, which is Yard Sale for Art, which is a biannual giant makers event, which started in the seventies, originally held by BSU art students as a way to clear out their studios at the end of the year. Moth recently hosted her 29th yart, which is pretty remarkable since her budget is zero and her volunteers usually are there only the day of the event. As the director, she urges artists to create a yard sale vibe by setting up their work on tables and keeping prices reasonable. Her strategy again is to promote local artists, as well as make local art accessible both in location and cost to Muncie residents. Moth told me she moved back to Muncie not only because of its affordability, which allowed her to buy her own home, but also to inspire community, and she's done just that. She's the leader of Muncie's local Stitch and Bitch Group, which is a fabric arts group that gathers once a month. She founded Cuplets, a local poetry group that meets monthly at the cup. She served as a board member for the Muncie Arts and Culture Council and was awarded the 2021 Mayor's Arts and Culture and was awarded the twenty-twenty-one Mayor's Arts and Cultural Council Award, uh, award, which was the Artist and Community Award. Moth has started Facebook groups to promote poetry, a group to discuss gardening, a DIY home group, which I need to join. She founded the Hey Muncie page to promote events and raise awareness of the good things that are happening in Muncie. Moth is everywhere on social media and always promoting our hometown. She hoped by creating these groups, she would promote Muncie and draw people off campus and bring them into the neighborhoods and the downtown area so they could experience all the wonderful things that Muncie has to offer. As Moth and I began talking about all the events and endeavors she's involved in, she did what all good leaders do, she shared the credit. When I asked her about First Thursday, she told me how Deb Dragoo has always been a champion of First Thursday, or how Mike Martin gathered musicians for an event they collaborated on, or how Alan Adams created a Facebook which not only promoted Muncie but encouraged discussions and dialogue, which she doesn't do. She effortlessly listed, listed these people who have carried the torch before her in these organizations and that are still active in these groups today. People like Tom Hartman and Dave Franklin. And with every name she said, the love for our city and the community that she has worked so hard to create came through. Moth is intentional in what she does, focused. She works tirelessly to build up organizations she's involved in in order to give opportunities to the makers and the artists and the bakers. She champions Muncie and never fails to reach back and help others as she works toward her goals. I love Muncie, and so I'm drawn to automatically to people who also love Muncie. And so when brainstorming on who I'd recognize this month for this award, I thought of Moth. I don't think anyone who's been on social media for the last five or six years can deny that Moth Danner is the voice of positivity for Muncie. She reminds us all of the great reasons to call Muncie home. And so it's my honor to present the first citizenship award of two thousand twenty-five to Moth Danner.
Thank you so much. You know, everyone who has stood here every month is a very impressive person, so I'm very flattered and honored to be a part of this. Uh, recognition isn't the reason to do the things we do, but it sure feels nice, so thank you. And I know that everyone here feels the same as I do, which is that it's important to care and be involved and make Muncie better for everyone. That includes all of us. Thank you very much.
Next month would be Brandon Garrett for the city council. Roll call, please.
Yeah.
Here.
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 President. Okay, we're gonna move into reorganization. Do I hear a motion for president of the Muncie City Council?
I'd like to nominate Harold Mason.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Basham.
Yes.
MacIntosh.
Yes.
Ms. Selvi.
Yes.
Ms. Selvi.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Yes.
While we're moving, I just want to thank Jerry for the last year. As a new council, a lot of us up, a lot of them up here knew we were kind of adjusting. Mr. Dishman did very well with, uh, his role as the president, so I'd just like to thank him for that.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, first off, I'd like to thank this council for putting their trust in me. I pray that I'll be able to live up to whatever expectations they have of me. And we'll get through this thing. So we're gonna bring this meeting to order. I'd like to call the meeting to order the Muncie Common Council. Do we do the pledge again?
No.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to vice president. Yes.
I'd like to make a nomination, make a motion to nominate Brandon Garrett as our vice president.
Second it. Okay, motion has been made and seconded that Brandon Garrett be nominated as vice president. Yeah. Are there any other nominations? Roll call.
Ms. Selvi.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Gulliam.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Mr. Basham.
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Dishman.
Yes.
You better take your papers with you. Mr. Vice President. Okay. To the neighborhood. The floor is now open for nominations for reading secretary.
Uh, I'd like to nominate, uh, Billy Mack, please.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded that Billy McIntosh be nominated for reading secretary. Are there any other nominations? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Basham.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Ms. Selvi.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh.
Yes.
Mr. Dishman.
Yes.
Ms. Gulliam.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we'll move into ordinances previously introduced.
One second.
For Mr. Boards.
I just gave him a copy of your email, Mr. Gibson.
Okay, I entertain a motion for approval of minutes.
So move.
Several last month's meeting. Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Brandon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Or do we do a roll call vote? Okay, appointments to boards and committees. Public appointments. Did the reading secretary read that? Oh, my bad. I got. Council officers, the council, yeah, we already did that one. Council member appoints to the boards and commissions. The appointed person is required to be a member of city council. Emergency Communications, nine-one-one board. One mi, one-year term. Current appointment is Harold Mason. Now we do the legal, legal council first.
You can do that. You already started on boards and commissions, so you can do that after.
Okay, okay.
Miss.
So where you go? Read them all. Yeah. Nomination for. Okay, are there any recommendations for the nine-one-one board?
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Harold Mason, please. I'll second.
Okay. The motion's been made that Harold Mason be nominated, seconded by Councilman Gillian. All in favor? Or do we do a roll call? Yeah, are there any other nominations? Roll call.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Mr. Basham.
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh.
Yes.
Ms. Gulliam.
Yes.
Ms. Selvi.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Dishman.
Yes.
President Mason.
Yes. Metropolitan Plan Commission, one-year term. Current appointed, appointment is Jerry Dishman.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Mr. Dishman to that position on the Metropolitan Planning Commission.
I'll second. Okay, there's been a motion made.
We all, we all second.
That Jerry Dishman be reappointed. Are there any other nominations? Roll call.
Ms. Selvi.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Ms. Gulliam.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Mr. Basham.
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Dishman.
Yes.
President Mason.
Yes. Industrial Revolving Loan Fund. One-year term. Current appointment is William McIntosh.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to nominate William McIntosh to continue serving.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded that William McIntosh be reappointed to the Industrial Revolving Loan Fund. Are there any other nominations? Question. Roll call, sorry. Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Ms. Selvi.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Ms. Gulliam.
Yes.
Mr. Dishman.
Yes.
President Mason.
Yes. The Riverfront Project Review Committee, three-year term. Current appointment is Rose Selvi. Okay, I understand the motion for Riverfront.
Riverfront. I'd like, I'd like to reappoint Rose Selvi.
Okay.
I'd like to, uh, appoint, uh.
Second. Motion's been made by Mr. Green, seconded by Councilman Basham. Uh, any other appoint, any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate, uh, Nora Powell for the Riverfront Board.
Second. Motion's been made that Nora Powell be nominated to the Riverfront Board, seconded. Motion made by Mr. Garrett, seconded by Mr. McIntosh. Are there any other nominations? Okay, roll call. Which one first? You gotta say which one you're voting for. Uh, for, roll call for Ms. Selvi.
Okay.
You have to be president last.
Yeah.
I rescind that. Um, Mr. Green.
Selvi.
Uh, Mr. Garrett.
Uh, Ms. Powell.
Mr. Basham.
Selvi.
Mr. McIntosh.
Ms. Powell.
Powell.
Ms. Selvi.
Selvi.
Ms. Powell.
Powell.
Mr. Dishman.
Councilwoman Powell.
President Mason.
Powell. I gotta read all of these?
No, I would just, I don't know.
Mr. Gibson. Do I need to finish reading all of these or?
Yeah, just go through each one.
Each one? Okay. Right. Okay. Public appointments, the appointed person is not required to be a member of city council. Edit Building Corporation Board. Republican Appointment for a two-year term. Current appointment is Troy Ingram.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. Ingram contacted me. He is interested in remaining on that board. Um, he is unfortunately sick with the stomach virus and unable to come tonight to speak. So I would like to make a motion to nominate Troy Ingram to continue on that board.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay, motion's been made by councilperson Powell to retain Mr. Ingram, seconded by councilperson Gillian. Are there any other nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Basham.
Okay, here's a nom.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Motion made by councilperson Selvi, seconded by councilperson Green. Any other nominations? Okay, roll call.
Uh, Mr. Basham.
Um, Basham.
Mr. Garrett.
Uh, Basham.
Basham.
Ms. Powell.
Basham.
Um, Mr. uh, Mr. McIntosh.
Basham.
Mr. Green.
Basham.
Ms. Gulliam.
Basham.
Uh, Mr. Dishman.
Basham.
President Mason.
Basham. Economic Development Commission, two-year term. That is a recommendation to the mayor for a final appointment. Current appointment is Aaron Clark.
Mr. President.
Do we have any? Yes.
I would like to nominate Mr. Jeff Green.
I'll second that.
What was that name, Jeff Greer?
Yep, Green.
Green. Okay, motion's been made and seconded that Mr. Jeff Green be nominated. Are there any other nominations?
Real quick, before you vote, I did just want to remind you, this is just simply a recommendation to the mayor.
Right.
Uh, that ultimate authority lies with them.
Yep.
So do we need to vote?
You still need to vote, yes.
Still.
On your formal recommendation.
Okay. Okay, motion's been made and seconded that Councilman Green be recommended as a appointee to this board. Roll call or voice vote? Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Dishman.
Jeff Green.
Mr. Basham.
Green.
Ms. Gulliam.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
Ms. Selvi?
Yes.
President Mason?
Yes. Ethics Commission, two appointments. One appointment for an initial one-year term and one appointment for an initial two-year term. Must have different political affiliations, must be city residents, may not be an elected official, appointed official, or employee of the city of Muncie. May not be a member of any other city board, commission, or committee. May not be an officer or employee of any political party and may be a state delegate. Maybe a state delegate. May not be an owner, officer, director, or partner of a business that has been, that has been paid more than three hundred thousand by the city in the previous calendar year. If y'all can retain all of that. And I'll open the floor for nominations. I would like to nominate Reverend W.C. Edwards.
Second.
As, for which term?
For the one-year term.
For the one-year term? Got it.
Yes.
And for the Republican nominee, I would like to nominate.
I, I think he did, yes.
And for the Republican nominee, I would like to nominate Dr. Sandra Whitaker.
Mr. President, is this just for the one-year term?
Yes.
At the moment?
The first. Okay. Any other nominations?
Could you help me understand? Do we need to know what political affiliations are at this point or not?
Yes, I mean, not, I guess not at this point, but whoever wins, you would need to know theirs. So that you're, when you're nominated for the second, they're not of the same.
Yes, okay, okay, I'm with you.
It really only matters who is selected with this one.
Yes, okay.
Okay, Mr. Edwards is here.
I'm sorry, may I rescind the nomination for the one-year term, please? I would like to renominate her for another.
Okay.
I, I would like to rescind that nomination. I apologize, Dr. Whitaker.
Can I bring him up to the podium?
Yeah, they'd like to.
Mr. Edwards, anything you'd like to say? In regards to this appointment?
We've been around the city for quite a few years.
Come up to the podium. A little history of your, of yourself.
Yeah.
To this council, I've been around the city for seventy. This year, seventy-eight years. I was a police officer for twenty-five and a half years in the city of Muncie. Deputy for eight of those years. I worked Southside High School, which I had many of you and many of your kids for over forty years. I was a pastor before I retired for thirty-three and a half years. And you're probably saying, how did he have so much on his plate? Well, God gave me a big plate. So I had this, what I had, so I'm curious to see what's, this is all about and, and I wanna work with whoever I'll be working with and, and hope that will, that God guide me in the way that he had me go. Thank you for the nomination.
Mr. Edwards, I got a hall pass, so I'm good to go.
All right.
That was authorized by me.
Yeah, it was, signed by Mr. Basham.
You got secrets, brother.
Okay, so we have no other nominations? Ms. Selvi rescinded her nomination?
Yes, I did.
Okay, roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Selvi?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Dishman?
Yes.
President Mason?
Yes. Now this is the two-term, two-year term.
Yeah, so now you have a two-year appointment, initial two-year term, and it just simply, they cannot be the same affiliation as, uh, Mr. Edwards, so be a different party or independent, just as long as it's not the same affiliation.
Right. What are you, W.C.? Okay.
So, uh, a Republican or an independent for this two-year term.
Yeah, I understand the motion.
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Dr. Sandra Whitaker for the two-year term.
Dr. Sandra Whitaker?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Yes, I second that.
Okay, motion has been made by councilperson Selvi, seconded by councilperson Basham. Any other nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Dr. Chip Taylor.
I would second that.
Okay, motion's been nominate, nomination's been made by Mr. Green for Chip Taylor, seconded by Ms. Gilliam. Any other nominations? Okay, we have Whitaker, Sandra Whitaker, and Chip Taylor.
Hello, Sandra Whitaker. My experience is primarily in education and administration, more recently until retirement with Muncie Community Schools. Uh, prior to that, Chicago area, Juliet, Illinois. Pardon me, Juliet, if you don't feel like you're part of Chicago. Most recently, I was, uh, I did serve on the Ethics Advisory Committee, and I found it rewarding, positive, and productive. Uh, in great part to the gentleman that's going to speak after me. And this gentleman here, thank you. And everybody that was on the committee, I think, needs to be commended, as well as those who gave community input, because that was helpful. And the, the tenor and tone of the meetings were professional and positive, so I appreciated that. So what do I bring to the table? Uh, his history of shared community values and the desire to invite dialogue from all parties. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions from anybody on the board?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Charles, Chip Taylor. Appreciate the nomination. You know, most recently, I was, I was the chair of the Ethics Advisory Committee. I've also recently retired from Ball State University where I teach, uh, where I taught public administration, public policy. When I was in grad school, um, I had training in, uh, teaching ethics across the curriculum. I incorporated that into all the public management courses that I taught. I've collaborated with my, uh, colleague Dave Concepcion in the Philosophy Department. We've done ethics training, uh, working with Shaver Leadership Academy. We've done ethics training for the city of Muncie, for Muncie Sanitary District. I've, uh, participated in a number of ethics training panels for, uh, uh, AIM, the Municipal Association, uh, Clerk Treasures, um, County Assessors or County Recorders, or somebody, I forget which, which one, their, their, their annual meeting. And, you know, before my academic career, I, I worked in local government in Missouri for fifteen years, so I've, I've got some knowledge of, um, you know, what it's like trying to, uh, do, do the day-to-day work. Sandra said the, the, you know, the, the committee work was very, very collaborative. We had a lot of good public input. She's really good, too, I can tell you that. From firsthand knowledge, so anyway, that's, that, that, that's enough, but be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Taylor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I make a comment? This is going to be a really, really tough one. These two, uh, wonderful individuals have really been the foundation, along with our council, and he will agree. It's a tough call. Uh, and like Sarah just whispered to me, either one is gonna be a great fit for the Ethics Committee, and I totally agree with that, so that's, I just wanted to say thank you. It's hard.
Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Basham?
Whitaker.
Uh, Mr. Garrett?
Uh, Whitaker.
Whitaker.
Ms. Powell?
Dr. Taylor.
Mr. McIntosh?
Dr. Taylor.
Mr. Green?
Dr. Taylor.
Ms. Gillian?
Taylor.
Mr. Dishman?
It's a hard one to make, but Mr. Taylor.
And, uh, President Mason?
Whitaker.
And again, thank you both for the time you put in for this. It's, it's gonna go, it doesn't go unnoted at all, the time you put into the Ethics Committee, getting it together and bringing it to where it's at now, so thank you both. You both deserve a round of applause.
Muncie Redevelopment Commission, two appointments. Must be a city resident, political balance not required.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to nominate Andrew Dale to, uh, return to the MRC. I would second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded that Mr. Andrew Dale be retained as the representative of the Metropolitan Muncie Redevelopment Commission, I'm sorry. Motion made by Ms. Powell, seconded by Ms. Gilliam. Any other nominations? You gotta have two.
Yeah, then I would make the motion, um, that we nominate, renominate Zane Bishop for that.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded that Zane Bishop also be retained on the Muncie Redevelopment Commission. Motion made by Ms. Gilliam, seconded by Ms. Powell. Any other nominations? Okay, with that being said, roll call.
Uh, Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Basham?
Yes.
Mr. McIntosh?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Selvi?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Dishman?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, you ready? That was it.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we, um, reappoint Dan Gibson as our legal counsel for.
I'll second that. I wasn't over here. Motion was made by councilperson Powell, seconded by President Mason.
Mr. May I make a comment? May I make a comment?
Yes.
I just wanna say from, on behalf of the whole council, thank you for all your hard work. And I know we call you all the time and we ask you these tough questions and we take, and you are right there answering our questions, our emails. I appreciate you, and I can speak from the whole council.
Yes.
You're a true professional, so thank you.
Yeah, I'd like, it's been, uh, it was a rough go, like I said, with the new council. You walked us through and made sure that we were staying where we needed to be within our legal lines every step of the way. You do it very politely, sometimes when we, you know, when we've done it a couple times, you do it very politely and very, uh, very professional, so, um, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
We haven't voted.
We need to, we need to, I believe.
Any other nominations? Roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
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 abstained.
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on.
Mr. Sorry, just wanted, just wanted to say that I abstained because of the, I, I passed out the conflict of interest, so you have that, too, right? Okay.
Comment, for all the people, anyone that's been applying to the board of commissioners tonight, um, I have to swear you in, so if one of you got it after the meeting, I'll say, and actually, I need permission to. And if you don't want to do it tonight, you can contact one off. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to ordinances previously introduced. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, okay. We're gonna move on to committee reports.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The Tax Abatement, um, Committee met prior to our numerous public hearings, uh, to discuss ordinance, I think it's two-dash-twenty-five. Um, we heard copious information and gave a favorable, want to give a favorable recommendation to the council in regards to that, um, decision.
Mr. President? I'd like to report, too, that, um, we are waiting on signatures, but the, the firefighters and the Fraternal Order of Police have come to an agreement. They have voted, uh, in the affirmative, and we will have details very shortly.
Okay, good deal.
That's huge.
Thank you.
That's a Happy New Year, isn't it?
Yeah.
Mr. President, it's not normally, it's not actually a committee, but in the past, over the past year, we invited Mr. Rob Keisling up during the committee reports to give an update on the Tillotson situation. If you are open to that.
I am open to that.
Good evening, Rob Keisling, External Affairs Manager with Indiana Michigan Power. Thank you, Councilwoman Powell, for your invitation, and Happy New Year to all of you. Update on our transmission project that's been going on for the past year in Northwest Muncie for the start of the year, because we've had a lot of releases, and it's gonna start high-level where we are on the overall project and the current phases. So the total project replaces our existing transmission line, which is the high voltage from generation facility to substation at the Kenmore Station off of Tillotson, near the hospital, and then ultimately ends at the substation near the airport. We refer to that as Delaware. There is a substation in the middle, just north of Bethel, near Ball State, or south of Bethel, near Ball State's campus. The phase we're most familiar with is the current phase, which Councilwoman Powell and I have had many conversations about, and I appreciate her patience and her advocacy for her district. That is all underground, and the lines are in what we call duct bank. It's a concrete encasement that keeps those lines protected, and so it went under Tillotson, and then at York Prairie Creek, it continues underground near Ball State's campus. When we planned for this project and when we assessed, budgeted, scheduled, everything, our assessment indicated the duct bank along York Prairie Creek would be reusable. This late last year, when we started replacing wire along Tillotson, and we were able to do a comprehensive, the really dig-in assessment, we found that that was not suitable for reuse and requires replacement. What we did with our traffic control vendor, along with the city engineer and our project team, was develop a path to reconstruct along York Prairie Creek north of Petty Road that would keep us out of the residential area as much as possible. There's three or four streets north of Petty. We really do not want to have construction traffic through that neighborhood as much as possible. We also have to keep our workers safe, which is resolved in what we thought would be off of Tillotson. Last year, the current traffic control plan, which has a double-lane closure, just, starting just south of Petty, which I've gotten feedback, some people just, starting just south of Petty, which I've gotten feedback. Some people love it, some people absolutely can't stand it. I've gotten both, and I understand. And that ends just south of Euclid to the north of York Prairie Creek. We expect that phase to go through this summer. There are some unknowns with the, it's the nature of the underground work. At the completion of that wire being energized, we start the road restoration. Adam Leach with the City Engineers Office and Donnie Wright have been very diligent in laying the expectations of us for repaving in terms of mill depth, underlayment preparation, and repaving so that the road matches and still stays on schedule with facilities larger Tillotson project. We're responsible for the areas we excavate it. As for, we have the whole picture. So, that's current phase. Before I go to the next phase of the project, I'm gonna pause for questions on that part.
Mr. President?
Okay, are there any questions? Yes.
Mr. Keisling, is there any way possible to open up the intersection of Tillotson and Petty, even if it's just for a right turn onto Petty from Tillotson and a right turn onto Tillotson from Petty?
I have asked our traffic control vendor to look at that. The current answer is no, but it can ask for that to be revisited.
Thank you. And any residents along Tillotson that suspect that they're having foundation issues should contact who?
If, if start with me, I will refer that to our right-of-way department.
And lastly, the sign at Riverside and Briar, is that yours, or is that the city's?
I would have to look.
It's a, it's a no, I think it's a road closed right there, and it's, it's really ineffective. I mean, it's not needed, and it unfortunately just causes a bottleneck of traffic for people, for residents pulling into that neighborhood. And I would like to respectfully request that if it is yours.
It's, we'll remove it, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Uh, I think you always are very, Rob, very upfront with us, are always step-by-step. We, anybody that's done a big project knows you're gonna run into unknowns. Now, I, I really commend you guys for measuring, you know, measuring twice, cutting once, so we're not back there, you know, a year from now. So, I just commend you for coming up, always being upfront, always giving us the step-by-step every time there's a project. So, I do appreciate that, and letting the public know what's going on. So, thank you.
Quite welcome. I appreciate the words. I understand the project has frustration for residents and for motorists and
Thank you.
people who use the road routinely and live there, and it impacts them more directly, and we understand that. We, we do. The next phase I just wanna touch on, because I'll end up coming back, and we know that, and I'm happy to be here every month as requested, is currently these facilities are all overhead, and they go along Bethel, north of Tillotson, and ultimately they leave the city and are north of Regan. Most of the, up until that Tillotson and Heath Field near Ball State portion can be replaced largely what we call on center where it is. When we get into Holtzman Village in Councilwoman Gillian's district, it gets very interesting. And the issue we have there, that's currently outside of the city, it impacts the city, and I'll explain it as we get there. Those lines were built before the houses, and we're not talking about the distribution that provides service. We're talking about the higher lines, the higher voltage. We cannot rebuild those where they are and meet our clearance needs. And to meet our clearance needs, we need to go in the roadway. And so, after this current phase is done this summer, we start the next phase, likely to start late summer, early fall, into next summer, where we'll be going along Regan, which is split between city and county, I believe, to the, I'm gonna call Twickenham and real Tillotson. There's like the two Tillotsons we all get confused by, block by block, for that to be put underground. That will require lane closures and restrictions. Those will come out later, but no reason to go six months early. But those individual landowners are receiving communication about the project delay, as well as the forestry activities that do start in this quarter. But just wanted to get that out there. The city engineer is well aware. I know they're adding that to their paving list, because the road will be repaved to their specifications when we're done. So, questions on that phase? I know I'll come back, but I also just like, hey, just reminding you all, it's a big project. It goes in the middle of next year, but would rather keep the communication going.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Public session?
Oh. Well, Rick Yenser, I know a lot of people on the west side wanna know why traffic is still restricted when there's no work being done. Those traffic restrictions should be lifted when they resume work in the spring.
Okay. Okay, moving on, we're gonna do ordinances previously introduced. Ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-four, and ordinance amending chapter seventy-seven, parking regulations of the Muncie Code of Ordinances. Is there a motion for approval of ordinance thirty-eight twenty-four?
I saw move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for approval. Roll call. Oh, public comments.
This Chief Sloan with Muncie Police, just wanted to stand for any questions that you folks might have had about what we sent you. I know legal, both sides of legal have talked about it. It seems to be pretty cut and dry, but.
On the fines you're gonna be dealing?
On the what?
Your fines that you guys wanna, you know, you know, for parking. Where's that money gonna go to?
Uh, it's already been, that's already been laid out in twenty-three twenty-one and twenty-two twenty-one, previous ordinances. So, it all goes into. It goes into account five four one for the city, which is used for different things, but also to maintain a, uh, city police vehicle fund.
You don't go through the clerk's office?
Sure.
Swear I wanted to go through the clerk's office if you can get that done.
Yeah, you can, you wanna speak to how it's paid online?
You can either, you can either pay it through muncie.rmcpay.com, or you can make a payment in the clerk's office. Those are the two ways to pay. Name's Darren Clark. I work, parking enforcement.
Chief Sloan, how much revenue will, do you suspect this will generate?
I don't think there's any way to tell that. That's gonna be based on how many tickets get written.
Last year, how many tickets did you?
Don't have that number in front of me. Wasn't prepared to talk about finances tonight.
Okay.
So, Chief, does that mean that some of these abandoned vehicles will now be expedited?
Well, that's a whole different issue. We're gonna handle that through the state with the abandoned vehicle code with the state. But these are gonna be, these deal with such things, you know, parking too close to a fire hydrant, parking too far out from the curb, parking too close to private drive, parking against the flow of traffic, parking too close to a crosswalk, parking too close to an intersection, things like that.
Mr. President? I don't know if this is a, is for you or a city thing, but the residential neighborhood permit parking, is that something that we already do? Is this new?
No, that's something that we do now.
We do it, okay. So, we just kinda keep bringing it up to what the state has, or?
Basically updating the streets and the permits, and there's, take Neely, for example, when they redid Neely Avenue from McKinley to Wheeling. It used to be two-hour permit parking along Neely, but now it has an island in the middle, so it should have been, they should have came back and made it no parking on either side.
Yeah, there is no parking on Neely at this point.
Okay.
Uh, I'm glad that you brought up parking on sidewalks. That, that's, we, we have a hard time saving the sidewalks we do have. When we have cars parked in there for long periods of time, it cracks up and Yep. makes a, you know, a mess than from a sidewalk that was normally great. So,
Sure.
I, I really like the parking on sidewalks.
Yeah, it's, it's like parking too close to private drives or even public drives. You know, we get complaints over at Westview School about it. You know, people wind up to pick up their kids, which everybody wants to do, right? But then you've got residents there that get the driveways blocked, and
Right.
they get upset about it.
Thank you.
I, I could barely hear Jerry down there, so I'm gonna ask this question again. When you get the tickets or give out tickets, you said they do go to the clerk's office?
You can pay them online, or you can go into the clerk's office and pay them.
Those fees go into the clerk's office. Is that what you're saying?
Those fees, she could speak to that, I guess, but that, those fees are deposited, whether it's a parking ticket or some kind of parking infraction, those are deposited in account five four one. Yeah.
Uh, Mr. President, if I may?
Yes.
Uh, as Chief Sloan mentioned, I spoke last week with Alan Wisely, who is one of the Assistant City Attorneys, and we worked through just a couple questions and issues that I had noticed, and, and some of them he had also, you know, flagged before, and I believe Chief Sloan mentioned one of them last month. Um, and so, I sent out a redlined version of this to you.
Thank you for that.
And I would recommend, uh, there's just a few slight revisions, as you see in that, that this ordinance be amended in accordance with that redline version before you take a vote on adoption.
So, do I need to amend my emotion?
You can just make, you already have the main motion on the floor. You can make a motion to amend in accordance with the redline.
Yes.
That I sent last week.
Yes. Would that be my call, or should someone else?
It can be anybody's.
I saw, I saw move. In accordance.
And then take a vote on that.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the redline.
And Mr. President, you can do that by voice vote. And then final adoption would be roll call.
Ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-four. Adoption.
Uh, first vote on the, voice vote on the motion to amend.
Okay, vote, uh, on the motion to amend. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Now, that's for the public comment, you know, move to adopt as amended.
Okay, on the public comment, we'll move to adopt as amended thirty-eight dash twenty-four.
He's so moved. Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded.
I missed.
All in favor? That's a voice vote.
Yes, I think. Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, I motioned, didn't I?
Sarah motioned and Brandon seconded.
Dale and I, Dale on the amendment, and I second it on that. I'm sorry, Councilperson.
Okay, ordinance thirty-nine twenty-four. Ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-four, an ordinance repealing chapter fifty-five of the Muncie City Ordinances entitled Cable Television. Anyone here to speak on the ordinance thirty-nine twenty-four?
Make a motion, we adopt thirty-nine twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded that thirty-nine twenty-four be adopted. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just briefly, as I mentioned last month, this ordinance, as well as forty dash twenty-four, which will be coming next, are both ordinances that are repealing regulations relating to cable television franchises in the Cable Television Commission. It's essentially obsolete. That authority now rests with the state, has for quite some time. The Cable Television Commission hasn't met in over a decade, I believe. Uh, and so, we just need to clean up the books and get both of these repealed.
Can we just do them both at the same?
No, do them one at a time, but I'm only gonna speak on one of them.
Thank you. Thirty-nine dash twenty-four. Roll call. Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, ordinance forty dash twenty-four. Ordinance dash forty, that, ordinance forty dash twenty-four, an ordinance repealing chapter thirty-four, section eight of the Muncie City Ordinances entitled Muncie Cable Television Commission.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance forty dash twenty-four.
Motion was made by Councilperson Powell, seconded by Councilman Garrett. Any other? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Ordinance forty-one dash twenty-four. Ordinance forty-one dash twenty-four, an ordinance amending chapter fifty-two of the Muncie City Ordinances entitled Waste and Litter Care of Premises. There a motion for approval of this? Whatever it is, yeah. A motion, motion made to approve by Mr. Green, seconded by Ms. Selby. Anyone here to speak on that?
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, just real quick, as I mentioned last month, this, like the prior two, was prepared by the city attorney's office, and this one is also cleaning up the Code of Ordinances. The sections that you are repealing are regulations and conduct that is covered by other sections of the code, particularly section ninety-eight and section one fifty-two. So, it's just redundant to have them both in there, and this is just a housekeeping item.
Okay. So, we made the motion and seconded it. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, ordinance forty-two twenty-four. Ordinance forty-two dash twenty-four, an ordinance to amend the City of Muncie Comprehensive zoning ordinance from the R-dash-five resident zone to the B-BB Variety Business Zone for four thousand block, North Morrison Road, Muncie, Indiana. Anyone here to speak on that?
I move. Yeah. I move for a motion, yeah.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded.
I thought you guys were already getting ready to vote. I didn't want to step in your way. I apologize. I'm from Ashton Land Surveyor, and this is the same parcel of land that we voluntarily annexed a couple, a month ago. What we're doing this time is we're combining the parcel, or rezoning the parcels so that they can develop it. So, uh, this is just one more step. So, I appreciate you taking this into consideration.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this ordinance? Does the council have any questions or comments? Further discussion, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on to new ordinances. Ordinance one dash twenty-five. Ordinance one dash twenty-five, an ordinance amending chapter one fifty-nine, floodplain management of the Muncie Code of Ordinances.
I'd like to motion to introduce.
Okay, is there a motion for introduction of this ordinance?
Second.
Ms. Selby? Seconded by Ms.
Councilperson Green have that one?
I'm Richard Rawlings, the Building Commissioner, if you have any questions about this.
Okay, I do. Mr. Rawlings, congratulations. And welcome to city government, and I do have a couple questions, would you explain to me if this is a state mandated thing? Do you describe, I'm gonna ask you like multiple questions and then you can. And is the county also doing this, and how is it gonna affect the forty or fifty households that's gonna affect?
It does, well, yeah, it's statewide, the DNR runs it, and the county's already approving it.
Okay.
And there's really no exceptions. We have about four hundred structures mostly covered by the, but well, it's mandatory requirement for the, to be FEMA flood insurance. And we have almost a hundred thousand dollars, or actually a hundred million dollars insured in the city. And there's about four hundred structures, mostly homes. But other than that, I mean, it's really just a little bit more structured than it was before.
Thank you.
So this is just kinda getting on board with the state?
Yes.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah, if we don't pass it, then everything. What they're doing is a little bit more increased accountability from, from the city. And so basically, if somebody wants to develop, we don't really do building permits, but if somebody wants to improve something in a floodplain, instead of going through us, then they'll have to go through DNR, which is just a totally.
Yeah.
You know, take an extra six months.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, I read through that, and that's, that's what, that's what I got, was us just kinda getting on board with them. And I didn't see, I have quite a bit of residents in the floodplain in my districts, especially Brookville Terrace and all that.
Yeah.
And I read through, and it, what I liked, I didn't see any increase in their floodplain insurance or anything from passing this, so.
No, there shouldn't be any.
Yeah, that helps out with him a lot, so I just wanted to say that.
And Mr. President.
Yes.
It's noteworthy that this has been approved by FEMA.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
As well.
Yeah, I mean FEMA basically does it through DNR. But yeah, it's all, it's basically just a little side note right now, just a little more accountability from us.
Yes, Mr. Dishman.
How long are you hanging around tonight?
I can hang around if you need me to.
Well, I'd like to talk to you if you don't mind.
Okay, you're sure?
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thanks.
Thank you.
And welcome.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this ordinance? The council have any questions or comments? Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Just to clear that, just for introduction.
Ordinance two dash twenty-five. Ordinance two dash twenty-five, an ordinance to vacate a certain public alley in the John J. Perkins Addition to the City of Muncie, Delaware County, Indiana.
A move to introduce.
I second that.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilperson Gilliam, seconded by Councilman Garrett. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this ordinance?
Good evening, council, my name is Alan Wisely, and I'm with the law firm of Beasley-Gilchristson. I am representing Avondale United Methodist Church and asking for this alley to be vacated. I am also a member of Avondale Church, my pastor at Arm and Trout here with me as well. So this alley cuts across, it's eight platted lots. The church owns five and a half of them. And that is the area that makes up the parking lot of the church. And so what is platted in the addition as a public alley is part of the church's parking lot, and it's where our handicap parking spots are located, and it's where the wheelchair ramp into the church is located. And then the very end of the alley where there are the two houses that the church does not own, they will retain that section of the alley in order to be able to get into the larger alley. Because this is just a ten-foot alley, and the other alley is a fifteen-foot alley. It's kind of a weird spot where two plats meet up to each other, so where the alley tees into it, there are four blocks in that addition that have this, and this is the last one that hasn't been vacated by the city council. And so this is just a block south of the Ross Center, where the Ross Center has just put in their new soccer fields on the old GM parking lot. So the church is just asking for this to be vacated because the church does have it paved over, it does have church assets in it. All of utilities were contacted, none of them had any objections. The only one that has facilities in the alley is AEP, and the church is reserving an easement for AEP.
I'd like to make a comment that through all of our neighborhood associations in Avondale, this is a, there's, this has never been a problem or been brought up, so I just wanna let you know that. We haven't had anybody speak ill of the way it is, or come in through or anything like that, so.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Is that, is that right behind the church?
Yeah, so it's between the church and the parking lot.
Okay, I was out there Saturday looking at it, and I noticed you got an alley across Simpson there.
Yep.
And the one you're talking about is on the side of the church, right?
Yep, so it is paved over, blacktop as part of the church's parking lot.
Now, how far does it go down?
So the alley goes down until it tees into the other alley that runs between Ninth and Tenth, it's parallel to Sampson. So the, the section that joins the church's property on the north and south will go with the church, and then there are two home, and then there are two homes there, which one is owned by Neil and Kelly Kringle, the other one is owned by Shannon McCormick. The way those two have access, Shannon McCormick's house has direct access onto the alley that goes north and south. Kringle Residence does not, because that's the former church parsonage, so it doesn't have a designated driveway. So that is the part of the alley that's marked as B and C to make sure that that house still has access to the north-south alley.
Yep, so it goes all the way down to the tee?
Yep.
Okay.
Will be vacated.
And then, I'm sorry, Mr. President, may I? So parcel B and C will be owned by Neil and his wife Kelly.
Yep, yep, Neil and Kelly, so that they have access out to that alley. And then the church is also then working on a separate easement agreement with them because their garage immediately abuts to the church's parking lot because it is the former parsonage.
The way, it's been paved over for a while. We've had the handicap parking in there for a while. And the way that they work this out, where everybody involved has the exit out of the alley and all that, it's still, so no one is going to be denied access to the alley, or the back of their driveways or garages, so I thank you for that, too. The way you laid it out and the way you went about it.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this?
Is the minister?
Yeah. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, right, thanks.
Public. This takes a roll call vote.
For introduction, you can just do a voice vote.
So we've done the motion?
Yeah.
Seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Resolutions. Resolution one dash twenty-five. Resolution one dash twenty-five, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Muncie approving deduction from assessed value of a new, of new manufacturing equipment in an already declared economic revi- revi- that's a good one. Revitalization area, Philip Pattern and Casting Incorporated.
Mr. Motion.
Okay, is there a motion?
To adopt resolution one dash twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilperson Powell, seconded by Councilperson Selby. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this resolution?
Good evening, council, I'm Tracy Lutton with the Muncie Delaware County Economic Development Alliance. I've been working with Muncie-based Philip's Patterns and Castings to assist them with this tax abatement application. They intend to replace some obsolete equipment that's going to allow them to compete for new business, take care, better care of existing customers. And this also provides some opportunities for current employees to gain some new skills. So the investment total is about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. This will allow them to retain their existing thirty-four employees. I know that the council likes to see job increases, but I will say the trends that I am seeing are, projects are heavier on capital investment and fewer jobs associated. I'm gonna let, I'm gonna have you listen to Jason Paul here momentarily, and he'll tell you a little bit more about the workforce, the lack of turnover that they have, and the quality of employment opportunities that they offer. I'll mention, the, the last abatement they had was in twenty-twenty-one. At that time, their goal was to retain thirty-one and add one, they have exceeded that, so they are at thirty-four today. They're being conservative in their job projections to make sure that they can meet their obligations to the council. They're seeking a three-year abatement, and I'd like to just close by saying this company was founded in Muncie in nineteen forty-seven, and they have continued to evolve, invest in themselves, in their, in their workforce. And I know we work really hard to bring new businesses to Muncie and Delaware County, and I think it's really important to acknowledge and help to incentivize the growth of the companies that we already have here. So with that, I'll bring up Jason Paul with the company.
Thank you. Thank you, I guess I would just open it up for you, if you have any questions for me, we've been around since nineteen forty-seven, it's family-owned. We try to invest in equipment to keep our employees. Currently at thirty-four employees, we don't have a lot of turnover. Typically, less than ten percent, so most of our employees have been with us for ten plus years.
That says a lot about you and your company, with the turnover rate being that low. But I was at the tax abatement meeting, and then it's nice to, nineteen forty-seven, can't say that a whole lot anymore, it took a hard hit. It's nice to have the factories here that stay here. You give great wages, you're a second chance employer, which is very hard to find anymore. So I just appreciate your work and what Philip Pattern's still being here and still hiring, you know, the wages that they are since nineteen forty-seven, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
How do you go about hiring your people?
Typically, we hire by word of mouth or referral. In the last couple years, we've tried a temp agency. We've hired out one person from that. Typically, when they get through their ninety days or something, they gotta move on somewhere else. But probably ninety-five percent of the employees we have are either referrals or walk-ins.
I've been on the tax abatement when they first started it. And they, they, this company has kept their word on the employment that they promised. And they're a well-known business out there on Riggin Road, they're in my area. I'll go to bat for this company anytime, and I appreciate you giving them a, I mean, they got a favorable recommendation already. I wish you guys would approve this tonight.
I, I have a statement I'd like to make. I've known the company for a long time, I worked as a subcontractor for a lot of the owners over the last, it's been at least ten years or before, before I've worked for them. Since I've been on city council, I have not worked for the family in any of the residents, but I wanted to disclose that. I do know some of the family, I knew some of them that had passed. Very good family, fantastic business that they have out there, I think we should support it, that's my statement. But I wanted you to know that I'd worked for some of the family members in the past.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'm just gonna state that I'm not a big fan of tax abatements. I like to, for certain things, and in general, wouldn't be a fan. But I was also at that tax abatement meeting. I heard that you give insurance to your employees, that you're a second chance employer, that you've been here for that long, and that you, you know, also, you know, were on time and, you know, maintained your commitment on your last tax abatement. So it's opened my mind to this.
Well, thank you.
I would just like to, to say that I didn't want you to get the wrong impression that we want to make sure we have jobs, 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 you know. I, my concern was, once you needed to get the extra money or to spend money, and then if you didn't get the abatement, that you would have to buy the equipment yourselves. My, my, my concern has always been that, I guess, because I've been on the other end of it, where families have to be let go of, you know what I'm saying? And that's the only concern I had, but I support you one hundred percent.
Hey, any other members?
Thank you.
From the public, have any comments? Counsel?
This is for adoption. The resolutions would be a roll call vote.
A roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on, resolution two dash twenty-five. Resolution two dash twenty-five. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Muncie, Indiana, approving a fiscal plan and definitive policy for the annexation of property contagious, contiguous to the City of Muncie, Indiana pursuant to ordinance number, yeah, number thirty-one dash twenty-four and thirty-two dash twenty-four. Is that annexation? Yeah, okay. I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman McIntosh, seconded by Councilperson Selby. Anyone here to speak on that? Any councilmen?
Mr. President, I do have, as I mentioned in an email earlier, the attorneys representing the city on this matter are from Indianapolis, and given their road conditions, I have him on the phone right now, so he can hear you if you have any questions for him. He's more than happy to answer them. As I mentioned to you all in my legal summary, this is the fiscal plan, I believe just for the single city-owned parcel and the Westminster annexation. It doesn't have to do with the Farmington or Heron Point. And this isn't approving the annexation, this is simply the fiscal plan. You would still need to move forward with the ordinance, which I think is in a couple months. Maxwell could correct me if I'm wrong.
It's the
City-owned property in Farmington.
Oh, okay, okay.
Any members on the council have any questions? Question I would have is, they were stating earlier that they weren't notified about the meetings or anything like that? Can he speak on that?
Max, did you hear that?
I did, can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Good, good evening, everyone, my name is Max Adams, I'm an attorney with a law firm of Barnes and Bornberg, represent the city on these annexations. Apologies, I can't be there in person, but Indianapolis is still working on its road, so I hope to be there in February and March. Regarding the notice provisions, state law requires us to provide notice of, at this point, two things, one, the public outreach meetings, which the mayor and his team conducted, six of those pursuant to state law. And we also have to provide notice to the property owners in advance of the public hearings that took place earlier tonight. Under state law, Under state law, uh, the city is required to provide notice to the addresses listed on the tax duplicate. Um, as you can imagine, you know, some people may not live in the residences. Some may have multiple addresses. So state law just says as long as we provide notice to the addresses listed on the tax duplicate, then the city has meant its duties for the notice requirements.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Point of clarification. What we are looking at is the city-owned parcel of Farmington. This is not the residential where the people live now. This is separate. This is the city-owned portion of Farmington Neighborhood and the Westminster Village.
Thank you.
Okay.
And again, it's just the fiscal plan. The ordinance is still up for adoption at a later time, correct, Max?
Yes, that's correct. If I could, um, I, I think it kind of helped to take a step back. So, um, yes, this is just the single parcel in the Farmington neighborhood. The fiscal plan resolution for that single parcel from Ball State, I believe, and then the Westminster Village as well. We will be doing a, um, the two super voluntary annexations, uh, the city-owned parcel and Westminster Village. Those ordinances will be eligible for adoption in the February council meeting. And then the other two, um, more contentious annexations will be eligible for adoption in March. The reason why we're doing this fiscal plan resolution, I'm sure it's been conveyed to you. There is, state law for some reason says that for, you know, your quote-unquote regular annexations, in this case, the Farmington and the Heron Point annexations. State law requires that you hold the public hearing, uh, public hearings, which took place earlier tonight, after you adopt the fiscal plan for those. For some reason, in state law, for super voluntary annexations, you can't adopt the fiscal plan resolution until after the public hearing. So this is, um, resolution before you is nearly identical to the one I believe you saw in November and adopted. The only exception is we just, we just, uh, tailored it towards these two annexations, the city-owned parcel and Westminster Village.
Roll call.
No.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
President.
No. Okay, moving on. Fabled ordinances. Resolution two dash twenty-five. It's all right.
We did that.
I'd like to read it.
No. Are we on to other business or?
We're doing tables.
Does anyone bring them off the table?
Okay, ordinance twelve dash twenty-four and twenty-seven dash twenty-four to the table. Is there anybody who want to take it off?
Nope. Not me.
Okay, moving on to other business.
Mr. President, um, given all the questions that came with the public hearings and given questions that I've received from, from the public regarding the advantages and benefits of annexing not-for-profit parcels and, and other questions, I would like to, I know we can't make a motion, but I would like to respectfully request that ordinances twenty-nine dash twenty-four, thirty dash twenty-four, thirty-one dash twenty-four and thirty-two dash twenty-four pertaining to the annexation of those four parcels be reviewed by the land and traffic committee.
We agree.
It does. Just, just, it's just a request. It's not a motion. It's just a request that the land and traffic committee consider reviewing those prior to the February meeting.
It doesn't need to put in a motion. Uh, when that, when those committees are established for this year, they could simply, you know, the chairman can call a meeting and invite whoever they'd like to invite to that meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It doesn't need to be a formal motion.
I respectfully think that's a great idea too. Uh, we need to dive into this more and that gives the public a little bit more, uh, outcoming if they can come and speak at those meetings as well. So, uh, I, I also just think that's a great idea too.
Thank you, sir.
Certainly not something that, uh, I had heard earlier that all is in favor of it. Okay. Is there any other business? Yeah. We have, uh, Charlize Jamison. Oh, that's right, or Charlene, Charlize.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Charlize Jamison, forty-five oh one North Wheeling in Muncie. Maya Angelo had a very famous poem that says, when someone shows you who they are, believe them the first time. And when it comes times to appoint leaders, what traits does the chief executive look for? Where on that list of traits does character and decency appear? I would certainly hope that those traits would be near the top. Recently, our city's chief executive decided it would be in our city's best interest to sideline two excellent, talented and knowledgeable citizens who have served with distinction on the Muncie Land Bank, one of whom was its founder. Both were up for reappointment, but instead the mayor chose to appoint former Delaware County Councilor Ryan Webb to replace one of those individuals. I won't use up my allotted time going over Ryan's resume. It's embarrassing to the county. It's embarrassing to Muncie. The question really isn't about Ryan Webb. It's about Mayor Ridenhour and, and the lack of judgment removing competent people in favor of someone with such little character. Oh, and who was the other person that the mayor appointed to the Muncie Land Bank? Himself. With this appointment, Mayor Ridenhour, you have just breathed new life into the embarrassment that is Ryan Webb. Delaware County voters knew better and rejected his reelection in the recent primary. They saw the kind of individual that he is. I would ask Mayor Ridenhour if he cannot see that for himself. Mayor, would you have us believe that in, out of sixty thousand Muncie residents, you couldn't find anyone with character and decency to serve? Here's a hint. You should have simply reappointed the two gentlemen that already had the right stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? That's it. That's it. With that being said, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. So, both.
So, yeah.
Motion's been made by Councilman McIntosh, seconded by Councilman Green. All in favor? All right. Opposed? Meeting adjourned.
That was really.